All school board members are present, so please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, next up is approval of the agenda. Um, we are going to make a revision to the agenda, so I'll need a motion for that revision, please.
Madam Chair, I've moved that we remove, um, the recognition of the Oak Grove Middle School Young Women's Leadership Form.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, moving on to the elections of officers. Madam Chair.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Nellie Corman for Chair.
I accept the nomination.
Seconding it, being the second.
Oh, second.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
Actually, I was wanting to make, um, a motion to accept the slate of Chair as Maureen Bartolata, Vice Chair Dick Erickson, Clerk Tom Bennett, and Treasurer as Jim Sorum.
Right now you have a nomination on the floor, so you have to go through that one first.
So I devote on the nomination of the, I have to go through the nominations for Chair first?
Yep.
Okay, so.
So we have a nomination and accept, and we need a second, is that right?
Actually, don't need a second out of nomination.
Well, she's second.
Gotcha.
Okay, so are there any other nominations? Are there any other?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Maureen Bartolata for Chair.
Second. Okay, so we have two people for Chair now that have been nominated, um, Maureen Bartolata and Nellie Corman, so are there any other nominations? Any nominations? Any nominations? Okay, I guess, um, we're gonna vote by hand, I guess, is that what my notes say here? I thought we had to do roll call.
Voice vote's probably better.
Roll call's better, voice?
Voice vote.
Okay, Mr. Bennett?
Nellie Corman.
Nellie Corman.
Nellie Corman?
Maureen.
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 All right, so Maureen is the new Chair, so I will move out of the spot here. And she will finish.
Do you wanna try it again?
Okay, thank you.
The shift, shifting of the chairs, or the signs.
What'd you say, Jim? Thank you.
Shifting of the signs.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the slate of Vice Chair as Dick Erickson, and Clerk as, um, Tom Bennett, and Treasurer as Jim Sorum.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Tom Bennett for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
You said we don't need a second?
Oh, they don't need a second, okay. All right, so we have, uh, two nominations for Vice Chair, and we'll go around the room, we'll start with them.
Bergstrom, yeah.
Dick Bergstrom? Oh, sorry, Bergstrom, called him Erickson, Rick Bergstrom. Tom Bennett?
Uh, Dick Bergstrom.
Dick Bergstrom.
Tom Bennett?
Tom Bennett.
Well, congratulations to Mr. Bergstrom.
Good work.
Thank you. Now, would you like to, um, oh.
Try it again.
Yes, for Treasurer, I'd like to accept, um, the nomination of Jim Sorum for Treasurer, and also this Clerk, Tom Bennett.
Second? Any other nominations?
Hearing none, we'll go around the room again, you wanna start, Tom?
Aye.
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 All right. And, um, in the election of officers, yes, the Deputy Clerk is Rod Zivkovich. Should we vote on that also? Okay, start down.
Aye? Oh, yep, aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Now we will have recognition of student staff and public, and we are going to recognize the art, um, holiday card project. There were some teachers from Indian Mounds and Olson Middle School that, um, helped make our holiday cards, and up on the screen you'll see some examples of their work, and these go out to all of our partners and friends, um, friends of education here in Bloomington. Terry Cooper is the teacher from Indian Mounds, Ann Gerton and Megan Logering from Olson Middle School were the teachers, and we wanted to thank them for some beautiful cards.
There's a lot of work put into these, the kids did, did a great job.
Thank you again.
Olson Middle School.
All right.
Great. Um, at this time, I'd like to, um, publicly thank our previous Chair and Vice Chair, Magath and Nellie Corman, for providing their leadership for the school year. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone that wishes to address the school board on an item that's not on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward. A requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe governmental meeting of some sort, things students may attend our city council meetings and school board meetings. The social studies curriculum guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, public opinion on the political process, and public policy forums. At this point, I'd like to invite the students that are here, from Mr. Starlene's class, from Jefferson, well, any class really, but, um, I think most of you are from Mr. Starlene, to come up to the podium and just state your name. If you're not for Mr. Starlene's class.
I appreciate it.
And your teacher, Mr. Starlene?
Carter Beck and Bloomington Jefferson.
Laban McCary, Bloomington Jefferson.
Dylan Kiefer, Bloomington Jefferson.
Blake Tocken, Bloomington Jefferson.
Hari Chen, Bloomington Jefferson.
Tori Double D, Bloomington Jefferson.
Danielle Stokel, Bloomington Jefferson.
Thank you. At the close of our session tonight, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature from one of the people, um, uh, at our administrative cabinet members that are sitting along the side tables. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and did you all find where your na, your pictures and sayings were up on the wall over there at Jefferson? So you all were able to check it out and find them, huh? Good. What a, what a, what a display.
Yeah. All right, at this point, we'd like to, uh, begin our Board of Education organization for 2019.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to move letters A through J with names added in, letter C. Uh, letter C is signature on checks. For Chair, I'd like to add Maureen Bartolata, for Clerk, Tom Bennett, and for Treasurer, Jim Sorum. And then the rest is move as stated.
Second. Thank you. Letters A through J, which include just our times and places of our board meetings and study sessions, our, uh, bank functions, et cetera. Is there any discussion about this matter? A through J? Hearing none? All in favor of moving A through J, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any more opposed? All right, would someone like to move part A?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, um, part A of the agenda.
Thank you, a second, thank you. It includes our minutes and personnel actions. All in favor of this, uh, motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, it consists of part B, bit of words. Someone like to make that motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the following 19 bids for mechanical improvements at Valley View Middle School. Martins Brenney Construction Company Minneapolis, bid of $779,000. Construction Systems Incorporated of Maple Plain, bid of $59,900. Emrekt Incorporated, out of Newport, bid of $61,826. Kellington Construction Incorporated out of Minneapolis, bid of $1,217,000. Lance Services Incorporated out of New Hope, uh, bid of $149,200. Central Roofing Company from Minneapolis, bid of $131,585. Capital City Glass Incorporated out of Blaine, bid of $655,615. Custom Drywall Incorporated out of St. Paul, uh, bid of $432,000. Superset Tile and Stone out of Plymouth, bid of $625,000. Saunus Interiors Incorporated out of Golden Valley, bid of $470,000. Florby Becker's Incorporated out of St. Cloud, bid of $352,932. Advanced Tarazzo and Tile Company out of Coon Rapids, bid of $221,640. Stein Brecker Painting out of Princeton, bid of $224,750. Plexus Company, uh, doing business as Cullenex out of Fargo, um, bid of $228,150. Janus Industries out of Canton, Ohio, bid of $51,510. General Sheet Metal out of Minneapolis, bid of $4,475,524. Siemens Industry out of Shoreview, bid of $927,215. Summit Fire Protection Company out of St. Paul, bid of $624,000. Bloomington Electric Company out of Bloomington, Minnesota, bid of $2,197,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Zivkovich?
Uh, Chair Bartolata, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members, um, this is the, um, annual old facility program, um, that we've been working on over the last, uh, since 2012-13 school year. Um, this is, one is a little bit unique, as we move into the middle schools, um, this project will run over multiple years, um, so it'll be running during the school year also, and that's why the dollar amount, and you can see as many of bids in the dollar amount of those bids, um, as high as they are, uh, but it's, uh, it's a process that we went through, uh, the bids resulted in numbers that were lower than what was budgetly planned.
Does anyone have any questions? Director Sorum?
Um, so, uh, Rod, the total is 13 million, is that, are all of these 19 covering the whole range of time that it's gonna take, or are there gonna be additional ones as we move along into the second or third year, or whatever?
Um, this is, uh, I believe there's four phases, these are the first two phases. Uh, we'll have a couple other phases that come to the board, uh, probably this time next year.
And this, this will be done starting in the summer, and then it will be continuing into the school year, and then into the next summer, and then.
The construction will be, uh, June of 19, with completion in August.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Next we have the construction manager services agreement rate increase motion, someone like to move that?
Madam Chair?
Director Bennett?
Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves increasing the rate for construction manager services between Kraus Anderson Construction Company and Independent School District 271 from 2% to 2.25%.
Second, thank you.
This is also dealing with our old facility projects, uh, this does not take into effect until we start doing projects after the Valley View project, so this isn't, uh, something that is part of the, the original bid. Uh, we negotiated with Kraus Anderson to push it off in additional, technically two more years, um, so they came in originally in 2012 with the 2%, and they've been flat for that period of time.
Any questions?
Just a, a positive comment, even though it is a, a 0.25 increase, is the fact that they've been such a good, reliable, credible, uh, construction company working with us, and, uh, and going along with it, I think it's just, um, it's really nice when you can get into a relationship of having a construction company and the architects and everybody else, all understanding what we need, and a bidding goes out and it comes in, and more than likely will be done before August of '20, because they're so good, but thanks for, uh, for this information.
We're gonna hold you to that completion date, before.
Hold me, yeah. I'll be over there.
So, why, I'm wondering, why is it necessary to increase from 2% to 2.25%?
There's a flat amount each year of allocation that we, we give them, so an example is, part of it goes for our normal operations, and then the rest of it goes to Kraus, so they really haven't seen a increase in dollar amounts of, over the last few years. They have, uh, inflationary increases, and, um, they've asked the last couple of years for increases, uh, we push back, and they said that the, at this point in time, that they needed a additional increase.
Okay, so is it typical that you see more increases more often, instead of it staying stagnant at the same level, or?
Um, a lot of times it will stay flat until a organization needs it, like, an example is with our, um, audit contract, there's a annual inflationary increase.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I thi, I think what we will, will look at, as, as you can see with there, I, I don't assume, uh, that there would be a increase in the near future, since we've almost gone eight years, nine years, for the first increase.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three is our mid-year progress report for board goals 2018-19. We have five, uh, goals. First was to update long-range facility planning, and we updated the facilities master plan at a board retreat on October 15th, 2018, and we are, uh, one of the work we are continuing to do is work with the city on the new community centers. Uh, second goal was to establish a school board dashboard, which will be operational, um, in early spring. The Policy Committee has, um, stated that they would like to review 20 policies and update them if needed, um, to date, and updated them this year. In community engagement, we've tried to strengthen the school board engagement, community engagement plan, and that plan was adopted by the school board 12/10/18. Superintendent Relations, we have a goal to collaborate with the superintendent on strengthening the school board community engagement plan, and that was adopted, as I said, uh, on 12/10/18 by the school board. So that's our update.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, it seems that we've, uh, accomplished all of our school board goals, so I'm wondering if we should look at adding any more to our plate this year, or if we should wait until June to tackle more goals, so I just wanted to see what the rest of the board felt, if we wanted to add some more goals or anything.
Um, I think that when we approve these in, for 2018-19, we can either move up the, uh, setting of goals for 1920, but I don't think, you know, since we already set these as 1819, to add more would be.
We could always amend it if, uh, one had anything, I just wanted to see if there is any desire to look at anything else this school year, or if we'd rather wait until June to look at anything, add any more goals.
Madam Chair? Um, well, I, I think there's always a, a desire to continue to, to look at more goals. I think since there's only, what, six months left, that whatever that goal is, if we want to accomplish it in, in this school year, it should be achievable, so what do you got in mind?
Well, I was, well, 'cause I mean, I know we've been talking about some, some things like start times, and maybe taking a look at that, if we wanted to, to, uh, look at that this school year, and started making, having those kind of conversations, or if we wanted to wait until the next school year to start having those kind of conversations. I'd, I'd like to move that conversation up a little closer than, than later, but just wanted to see what the feel of the rest of the board was on that.
Director Sorum?
Madam Chair, I think we can have all those discussions, I mean, there's a lot of information out there, and we can have a lot of discussions about it, but, but adding goals or subtracting goals, we still need to finish up our, uh, our policies in order to fulfill that goal, I think we should just wait, and then in June, when we do discuss, um, our future goals, then if we've had discussions on some of the other things, we can introduce them as goals at that time.
Madam Chair, I, I would be more in favor of starting, looking into goals now rather than waiting, because, you know, with the constant change that we experience in our schools and, uh, different topics that come up, I think it's, uh, it's important that we look at those right now versus waiting, um, and avoiding, trying to avoid some bigger issues.
I just have a question, since you brought up the Policy Committee, you have to finish for the, if I could ask the Chair of the Policy Committee, are you, are you, is your group already on track to meet that goal soon, do you have?
That goal by our next school board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Wow.
I, I am not opposed to having conversations about things, I wanna make sure that it makes sense, that it, that it fits into what we're currently doing, I know that, that you had mentioned, uh, start times, I know that's on, um, um, on our radar for, for later this year, so, uh, I'm, I'm not opposed to having that conversation. I don't know what else, what else we can fit into this year, changing start times is a lot of conversation, I mean, there's, that's a, that's a long conversation, and it doesn't need a start date, so I'm, I'm not opposed to starting that conversation whenever we can fit it into our agendas.
I agree, it's a long start time, I'm not trying to start conversation, I'm not trying to say we should do it now and, and maybe make changes the next school year, so I think the conversation will take longer than that, but I would just rather start that conversation sooner, rather than waiting until June or July to start having that conversation.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I know we're not voting, but I'm.
Yeah, I would prefer that we do something like that, that we already have been thinking about for next year already, and moving that timeline up than starting something completely different and trying to finish it at the end of this year, or moving it into next year, I'd rather move something that we've already talked about, just move that up, if we're gonna change anything.
One, Judge Lee.
Um, I believe that when we were talking about start times, that the goal for us was to just start researching, and looking at other school districts, and seeing how it was impacting them, um, successfully or unsuccessfully, and I think we're still at that place, and I know that we received some materials from Les about that, and, um, as, I believe, Nellie, you found some information as well, and passed it on to us, and I think we can continue to do that, to kind of keep it at the forefront, um, but if I understand correctly, we also have contracts this year, and that's going to take energy and time, and so we weren't planning to do that this year, so, but I think we can still continue the conversations about it, and, and still do the research.
Yeah, I just think it's important that we, we do have that conversation, that we enter in, into that conversation as soon as possible, um, just because, um, you know, it would be important to get to know from the superintendent and the administration if there's anything else that they have in mind, that maybe they would suggest the board as well, that we may need to start working on right now, before we, before we start getting more mandates this year, which is coming soon.
Uh, why I, I brought this up is 'cause I think where we left this conversation, the formal conversation of this, was a study session last fall, and it was like, it was said that we already have a lot of items on our plate this year, so we don't wanna tackle that this year, let's maybe consider putting it as a goal next year, and then here we are reviewing our board goals, and it's like, well, we're done with all of our board goals halfway through the year, so that plate that was full doesn't seem so full, so we can start having that conversation now, instead of waiting until June, so I don't know, just kinda see, what do the people think of that?
Well, this is next year.
Yeah, well, it was the next school year's board goal, so we had that conversation this school year, these goals were already full, so we didn't wanna add it to our goals at that time, but maybe look at adding it to the 1920 school year's board goals.
I'm also thinking that, um, maybe we're not looking into new goals, just kind of reviewing of the goals that we have already accomplished, and, um, seeing if there's, uh, maybe it's, one of those goals are so, are goals that we need to continue to work right now on, um, for example, the community center and the, and the type of relationship that we establish with the, with the city council, with the city of Bloomington, so I think that's an important conversation that cannot wait, and, and it cannot just be left as this was 2018, and then we're done, but that's gonna be a continuing conversation, and it is important that we get into that type of conversation now.
Well, we're gonna be having a board retreat coming up here in the next month, six weeks or so, and all these things can be hashed out there, I think.
Thank you, if we put those on the agenda, that'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be there. All right, that brings us to board member reports. Who'd like to go first?
Madam Chair?
Ursula, please.
Um, not, uh, not a whole bunch has happened since we last met in December, but, um, I did have an opportunity to, um, to attend a 917, Intermediate District 917 Board Meeting, um, we went over the revised budget there, um, just do a little fine tuning, that's our mid-year adjustment, uh, we also went over the, it was a six-month, um, Superintendent Review, typically we don't do six-month, it would be an annual, but our Superintendent is new, Mr. Zuzik, uh, started in July, so we, uh, we used a new template that, that needs a little bit of work, it was an online template, um, we worked over the, the questions and, and how they, how they were relevant, and perhaps how they weren't, um, but it was a great conversation, um.
There were a couple other items on that particular agenda, but as far as the venues that I've been able to visit, that pretty much does it since our December meeting and just meeting now.
And now, Dr. B.
I was able to visit Olson Elementary and see their enthusiasm at their, you know, end-of-the-semester gathering, their white tiger rally, and took some time to go around the hallways and see some of the book reports and the things that they're doing to encourage the students to get into reading, and I was pretty surprised at the things that I saw. They had posters that students had made, and I liked the fact that they were looking at writing skills as well as students who have artistic ability to be able to present what they know in a gifting that they have. Because not everybody is as good at words, and some kids aren't as good at art, and so it gives a balance to both, and that was enjoyable to see. I also went with Nellie to the AMSD legislative preview, and two of our representatives, Melissa Halverson Wickland and also Steve Elkins, attended, and we were able to sit with Steve, and the presentations were excellent. There were four superintendents who spoke about how the current funding formula is affecting school districts, even districts that are using Great Wisdom and how they are using their facilities and their funding and still falling short. And it's available to see online if you go to the Association of Metro School District's website, AMSD, and, or you can contact me, and I can forward you the link. And they also had four representatives giving their priorities for this legislative session, and just today I got an email from AMSD contact Scott Kunkquist, and there are 91 bills being brought forward that have to do with education, and some of them are in line with AMSD's platform. So I was very encouraged that, having seen that, that some of those legislators did listen, and now we have to see how far they'll go. So it was very good, very interesting, and it was fun networking with people, and we also met Mary Catherine Ricker, who is our new Commissioner of Education in Minnesota, and Nellie and I had our pictures taken with Steve Elkins, and we made it onto the website, the Facebook site, and also Mary Ricker. So very good day, really enjoyed being with Nellie and learning a lot from her and her leadership.
Anyone else?
Yeah, for the awareness of the board, the legislative committee for the board is going to be meeting tomorrow, and we're also going to be meeting with the superintendent and to discuss our legislative platform that then we will be bringing to you for your approval before the end of the month.
I had a chance to attend the PTSA meeting and also a rally at Poplar Bridge Elementary, and last week I had a chance to attend the Westwood fifth-grade winter party, and then I also went to the update from John Weiser and the tech team, and the superintendent and I met on the update on our school board dashboard. You know, they gave us a presentation, feedback, that type of thing, and then they're going to work on it some more, and eventually they'll be able to launch it to us this spring. The calendar committee also met. I think that there were some more changes, and I think we, I don't think the calendar committee's ready to put that one out yet. Is that correct? We have a little more work to do, but there's a lot of good conversation there, so, and then I also was at the PTSA council meeting last week, and there, there was a presentation once again with John Weiser and the executive director of technology and the digital learning people, and so there was a presentation on the new technology-enhanced learning for the people that are attending the PTSA council. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to remind everyone that the Bloomington Book Fest is coming up on March 2nd, 9 to 12 p.m., 9 a.m. to noon at Out Grove Middle School, and so if you have any little ones in your family, please make sure they're there, because it's going to be a fun day. That brings us to superintendents.
Thank you. Three things. First is a request, administration requests a motion to establish a closed session upon the conclusion of the January 28 school board meeting for the purpose of negotiations discussion.
So moved.
Second.
In favor of the closed session on January 28, after our board meeting, please say aye. Anyone opposed?
Thank you. Next is an informational topic. At the end of January, Bloomington Elementary Schools will be hosting kindergarten registration events for families of incoming kindergarteners for the 1920 school year. Please check with your respective attendance area schools for the specific dates and times of those events. And finally, a recognition. Today, Dick Berchdom was a featured speaker at the Bloomington Noon Rotary Club meeting, and his speech was about a virtual tour of Nine Mile Creek. The reviews were all positive because he shared digital images of wildlife he had taken, and what was entertaining was that he talked about information about each animal, and he shared how he came about taking those images. So congratulations, Nick.
Thank you.
Well done.
Good job.
Thank you.
Did you talk about coyotes and how to disband them from our neighborhoods?
There was mention of coyotes, and I'm going to sic them all over to your yard.
Because it's fenced in, so I can keep them in there.
Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Right. Thank you.